Thank you. I apologize for being late, but I'm here now.
All right. Today is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. We welcome everyone here to...
Microphone.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. Microphones, everyone? Okay. We welcome everyone here and thank you for being here. And we welcome those who are watching us via YouTube. So, we will call this to order and our opening will be given by Councilman Gordon Zillis.
I'll make some comments in the form of a prayer. Dear Father in heaven, as we come before thee as council members and as citizens of Cache County, we're very grateful for the many blessings which thou has shared with us. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve and we're grateful for this beautiful valley which we live in, and the surroundings which we enjoy. We're thankful for all our blessings. As we meet here today, Father, we ask that thou would help us to be attentive and that those who are here to speak, that they'll have a clear understanding of their mind and be able to share the things that they would like to present. We also ask that thou would be with our armed forces who are protecting us. We appreciate them and we are so thankful for them. Pray that thou would watch over them and keep them safe. We also ask that thou would be over all of those who we associate with, that they'll be watched over in our absence. We now ask that thou would be with us as we share our ideas and pray that we'll be attentive and that we'll be accepting of each other's opinions and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Stand and report the Fledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Gord. You appreciate that. All right. Has everyone reviewed the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Review of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last time?
I had a question on the minutes, though.
Okay.
I think it didn't... I remember that Executive Zook was in attendance, but it didn't list him as attending.
Was he here partial... partially?
He'd be like, was here at first, wasn't he?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, it should say that he was there and then give the time when he left.
Okay.
So, I would move to amend the agenda to include him as attending.
Right?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we do an amendment to the minutes in showing that Executive David Zook was here and left, but we don't know what time.
We... yeah, we don't know what time.
Okay. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstained. I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gina.
You bet.
All right. Our county executive is not here, so looks like we have some appointments to the Cache County Library. We have one person here and...
Did we approve the minutes as amended?
We amended them, but yeah, we need to approve them.
Okay. Approve the amendments as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstained.
And Paul... Carl abstained. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on the library.
Okay.
Being a member of that board, we had a discussion that ex officio members, their term would just be their term. Janine, do... did we need to reappoint Janelle Seeley? I thought we decided we weren't... we didn't need to. I'm confused.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to do it anyway.
That's... that's a fair point.
Okay. Very good.
I did it just to cover basis.
Just to cover basis. Okay.
All right. So, we have appointments to the Cache County Library Board of Directors. Janelle Seeley as one, and then we have Chelsea Karchner. Chelsea, are you here? Very good. Thank you. And Janelle, I understand is not here today. All right. Very good. Do we do a vote on that?
Yeah. I'll move that we appoint Janelle Seeley and Chelsea Karchner as members of the Cache County Library Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Janelle Seeley and Chelsea Karchner to the Cache County Library Board of Directors. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to have Chelsea say anything?
Chelsea, would you like to say anything to us?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for being here. Thanks.
Tell us which book to read.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Financial reports. We've got a copy of those on our agenda. Items of special interest. Looks like we get to be introduced to the 2022 Cache County Rodeo Royalty. This is awesome. You all look beautiful. Thank you for being here. And who is going to do the introductions for these ladies?
Is it okay if we just introduce ourselves?
Sure. Please come up stand in the front and introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry. My sash won't...
Okay. You're good. You're good.
Hi, my name is Julianne Christensen, and I'm a 14-year-old daughter of Harry and Wendy Christensen. And I am from Meckrick, Iowa, and I'm your 2022 Cache County Bar and Rodeo Junior Princess.
Great.
Hey, you guys. I'm Taya Hess. I'm the Cache County 2022 Princess. I'm a daughter of Shane Duthy Hess, and I'm a second.
Hi, my name is Jessica Anderson. I am the 2022 Cache County Junior Princess. My parents are Timothy and Denise Christensen, and I am the rich and wealthy daughter.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Lynn. I am a 16-year-old daughter of Ernie and Yannick, and I am fine and thoughtful.
Hi, my name is Natalie Noble. I am your Cache County Bar and Rodeo 2022 First Assistant. My parents are Wendy Berndsen and Amy Boll, and I am the rich and wealthy daughter.
Hi, you guys. I'm Bernie Deilson, and I am the 20-year-old daughter of Lance and Michelle Olson from Oberon, Beaver Dan. And I am your 2022 Cache County Bar and Rodeo Queen.
Great. Thank you so much, ladies. Anything you'd like to say to us? You can turn around. We want to look at your beautiful faces. So, yeah. Is there anything you'd like us to know?
Would it be okay if I were to give you guys my prepared speech?
We'd love it. Yeah. If you'll step up to the microphone over there and thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
You see, I recognize quite a few of those voices off from the radio.
(laughing)
Now we know what y'all look like.
Riding hard and fast under the glow of the arena lights is a dream few come to realize. The rodeo cowboys and cowgirls who live this dream are quick to seize the moment, yet slow to let go of the memories made while riding the rodeo trail. More than just a sport, rodeo has a code of its own, where family, friends, and tradition come together. It's not an easy life, but easy never was the goal. The goal was to trust in God, work hard, perfect talent, and make a living, all while keeping the Western tradition alive. A rodeo life is made up of long drives that climax in small moments, eight seconds at a time for roughstock riders, and even less for timed event cowboys. Yet, in between the long drives and the quick seconds, the rodeo cowboys and cowgirls always seem to make each moment count. There are moments of prayer. Many times, I have witnessed roughstock riders kneel before an event, humbly petitioning their maker for the animal to perform its best, praying for safety, and asking that their personal effort will also be their best effort. And after their ride, glancing up to heaven, grateful for one more day and one more ride. There are moments of purulation as they score that 95-point ride, and moments of despair as they buck off or hang up. There are moments of tipping their hat to the cheering crowd, and moments of tipping their hat to the animal that just threw them. There are moments of kicking up their heels on the way to the pay window, and moments of kicking the dirt and kicking themselves for letting that one get away. There are patriotic moments, reverent moments, unrushed moments, and precious moments. Moments taken to shake a youngster's hand, share a bit of advice, unkink a coil, or fill the loop. And then there are those special moments when the whole rodeo community comes together in support of cancer patients, or veterans, or perhaps a family who just needs a lift. As the years fly by, we begin to realize that life is lived in the moment. So, seize the moment and make it count, for as any cowboy will affirm, the best memories are made moment by moment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much. If we could have all of you come back up here again and we'll get a picture of all of you, we'd appreciate it. Yeah. Face that way. Face Janine over there.
Do we want to stand behind them?
Shall we stand up behind them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to be covering you guys.
That's what I'm gonna do. Spoil the picture.
(laughing)
We were thinking it was better if we sat down.
All right. I can't see far, bro. All right. That's good. That's good right there. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you, guys.
You are awesome. Awesome, awesome.
We'll see you at the fair. We're excited.
Okay. Very good. All right. We have an update on the animal facility now from Sheriff Jensen. Is he here right now? Okay, great. But he mostly wanted to talk to us about an address change, right, Sheriff?
Now, before you start, because they're such nice ladies, if you're planning to stay for the whole meeting, fantastic. But if you want to sit out and get ready for the rodeo, please feel free to do so.
I think Mont Colton ought to buy you all a sundae at somewhere.
(laughing)
That's right. Get him up for that.
Noble, you have to sit and listen to my speech.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a hard act to follow, Sheriff.
That is a hard act to follow.
I feel that much uglier after standing right here. I don't have a whole lot to report. Is I... just to give you a quick update on where it's at, they're making great progress. Excuse me. We got the parking lot in. About everything's done inside the building that they can do with the contractors right now. Working at the county attorney's office right now to come up with an addendum to the contract. So, they're not billing us for the time. They just have to wait for stuff, and we're not billing them. So, the contractors will be out of there this Friday. We'll be on an addendum to the contract that when, like, when the air conditioners come, they'll be back up here to ensure all the... everything's done and installed correctly. We're gonna do a walkthrough next Tuesday with the contractors for the punch list of items that aren't completed. And then we'll have the county's punch list of the things that, if it's paint or chips, or things that just aren't right, that we want to have on our punch list. Some of the dates for delivery on some of the items have been moved up a little bit. Now, we've been told, like, the air conditioning units will be here mid-August. So, if we can know when the delivery date's gonna be, we can set the installation date. And then the garage doors are the big one we're waiting for, so we can secure the facility all the way. They'll be here the end of August or the first week of September, and we can probably get them installed fairly quickly as well. The furniture's arrived. It's just sitting in storage waiting, so we can get in there and get it installed. So, it's... the last month, things have kicked up a little bit, and things are coming along a little bit better. I don't want to rush the opening. I want to make sure everything's perfect when we do have an opening. So, I'm probably still shooting for maybe like an October... excuse me, an October 1st opening date, so we can get the staff in there and get them trained and get all the animal control from the... all the valley to understand what the process is gonna be and where to drop things off. We just want it to be right the first time and not do the same thing over 10 times trying to figure it out as we go. So, I think that'll give us about two or three weeks to get ready for the opening. So, it's coming a long way, and it's... the last little while's been actually really good.
Great.
So, I'm excited. It's getting good, and it looks great. And now you can... we'll do another tour. You can actually come down and see not half-studded walls and half-sheet rock walls and some concrete, no asphalt. It actually looks like it's an actual building now. So, yeah, it looks great. I contacted the Madam Chair. I think we still need to get to the point where we look at... the council looks at naming that road in front of the facility. It kind of comes back to that goofy addresses that are down there. Just as a refresher, so the impound facility's 1165 Gateway, and the sheriff's office is 1225 West Valley View. We've had the electricians driving around Providence, trying to figure out where the dog pound is on Gateway Drive. Sheet rockers have been lost a few times. But because we're the developers of that road, and I've talked to Logan City, that we can name that road whatever we want, just to make both addresses consistent, is what we're trying to get to.
Chad Jensen Way.
Yeah.
I got a couple of better ones if we can do... (laughing) I don't... really don't have any better ones. I kind of threw it around to some of the staff, and because it's the jail and it's gonna be the impound facility, some of the ideas that were thrown at me just from some of our staff would be like, maybe Guardian Way or Sentinel Way, something that deals with like public safety and guardianship, something to that effect. But you guys are the brains of the operation, so I will accept whatever name you want to give the street. And then we can contact the city and get both addresses changed, so it's all on the same road and not confusing for folks.
Counsel, do you have any suggestions or...
Impartial to Chad Jensen Way.
(laughing) I like Casey Snyder Way.
(laughing)
Couldn't be late, man.
(laughing) Any... any other comments?
We don't necessarily have...
The decision, Sheriff.
You know, if you want to give it a couple of weeks, that's great. Just before we get the opening, if we... I can get probably a couple of weeks leeway with the city to make sure it's... the names are entered right and the addresses are correct, then we can do it anytime. So, if you want to give it a couple of weeks and maybe like next council meeting, then I'll be happy to do whatever the council wants me to do.
Great. If I... if the council members could maybe send me what they feel like would be a good name, and then I can put it out there to everyone, and we can have that ready by next council meeting, Sheriff. Is that all right?
That's perfect.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dock and Person Pound Roadway.
All right. Our next item of discussion is an update by Joel Merritt on our Public Works... Public Works Road Division.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate being able to come before the council. First of all, I want to say, it's gonna be very difficult to file... follow up that nice young lady. The enthusiasm, the spirit she did with that, very impressive.
Yeah, very much.
You're not gonna get that from me. Second of all, I can tell you how... oh, I could... well, my wife's here, and I don't want to embarrass my family. I don't want to embarrass our director. Second of all, I'm really glad our building is built, the Public Works building, because it is a challenge getting supplies and those kind of things. I felt like we really lucked out before it got really bad. So, for what you're doing, good luck and with all things. It's great you're making that progress. Anyway, I just wanted to take tonight... appreciate the being able to come for the council. I'll be very quick. I know time is very important. First of all, I'd just like to thank our Public Works Director, Matt Phillips, publicly. I have really appreciated since he's become our director, his professionalism he's brought, and some of the knowledge he's brought. It has been very beneficial as we've grown together and created a Public Works and the Road Division, and we're really grateful for him. I also want to publicly thank one other person with us today, and that's Jeremy Hudson. You can't miss him. Is he in the orange? That is required uniform for him. Jeremy is our road foreman, and when it really comes down to it, he organizes the team. He gets them into the equipment. He takes a lot of the phone calls, and the rubber hits the road, and Jeremy's the one that gets them out there. And I truly appreciate the upper management really depending on people like him when it comes to getting these projects done. So, I appreciate that. So, I've got a presentation. I just want to start with, most of... most mine is not gonna be written, but I'd like to just read an opening statement. "The primary objective of the Road Division is to enhance the mobility of our county. To accomplish this, the Road Division has recognized the wide variety of assets from capital or fixed assets such as facilities, infrastructure, roads, equipment, to non-capital items such as computers and tools. Management of these assets takes a systematic approach to selecting the best investment at the right time to maximize the life of the asset being measured. For example, if our goal is to maintain our roads in good conditions, we need to make a periodic investment in the pavement, rather than letting it deteriorate to a level that requires a major investment to bring it back to a good condition. Periodic maintenance investments typically total less than the major investment in required to rebuild a road." So, we have established six responsibilities as I've been in the Road Division. I found six important divisions that we look at and that we think are important, and I've... I have listed as follows. And I'm just gonna spend just a minute on each one. Go ahead. "In the Road Division, we're responsible for operational management," and I'll speak quickly on that in a moment, "but also for road management, infrastructure management, capital improvement projects, outside contracts, and interdepartment projects. One of the most important things on operational management is we come before the council and we request a budget, and the council approves a budget through the process. In the years past, and this year, we've been afforded about $5.5 million. We understand the importance in planning. We understand the importance of budgeting that money to go back into our road systems and to create safe roads for our public." Excuse me. Couple of things I'd like to think is, we talk about budgeting. We talk about personnel management. One of the biggest things we have to do in our assets is the assets of our people, and also in our fleet management, and our scheduling, and our dispatching, and our training. Once that's accomplished, we move on. But I want to talk about two of those very important aspects. This is the heart and soul of the Cache County Public Works Department Road Division. It is the people we hire to get the work done. And I can talk a lot about each one of those individuals, but I'm not. I'm just gonna quickly recognize that we have individuals there that have been there for 30-plus years, down to one year, to maybe 16 years, to 24 years. They vary. But each one of them bring a skill level and something they contribute back to our division to help us to be successful and to spend money wisely and hopefully correctly. The second part of our operational management is important is our fleet access management. Yes, it costs money to purchase equipment, but we try to take that equipment. We try to maintain it. We try to make sure it's in good shape. We build a building where we can store it and protect it, because when selecting the right equipment for construction project, it is absolutely crucial when it comes to budget, timelines, and execution. If you ask most construction workers, and I'll bet you could ask Jeremy this, what you can do is you can find the right person and put him in the right equipment, and they can accomplish pretty amazing things. Look what we've done in this country with that kind of determination. So, let me talk a little bit about our second thing or our second level, and that is road maintenance. And I'm not gonna go in a lot of detail, because I'm only gonna go for about another five minutes. But in road maintenance, we maintain over 392 lane miles a road. That means if you were to drive a road for 200 miles, that's the road we maintain. But we call it lane miles, because you have to go up and back one way. So, we retain... we fix both sides of those roads. We do everything from tree trimming, to snow removal, to dust mitigation, to road shouldering, to material transport. These are the numbers that just this year, from January to July, that we have put in. Over 8,351 hours and over $1,120,000 have gone into doing these type of projects. And I've got a further breakdown, but that's not the important point. The important point is the amount of work that is truly put into some of these projects for just road maintenance. The next one we talk on that level of responsibility is infrastructure management. The longer I've been here, the more I realized our infrastructure is so critical. We have 39 bridge structures in the county, over 2,000 culverts, 54 cattle guards, 3,500 feet of guard rail, and probably more that needs to be installed, 29 seasonal gates that we control and watch over and fix, over 1,300 road signs to help direct the public, keep them safe, over eight gravel pits that we maintain, so we can get our products for county projects and that. They are very important. We total about 711 hours, over $54,000, putting back into that infrastructure, which we will do a lot more, but that's just what we've done in the past six months. The next level we talk about is I've realized it is our outside contracts and what we call the intercounty projects. Our outside contracts, it's interesting. I know that might be a little small in the writing, but we work with multiple cities throughout the county: Newton, Clarkston, Trenton, Providence, Paradise, all of those. We help them in things that they may not have the capacity to do, or it's difficult to contract out and do. We do chip seals. We do paving. We do potholes. We do dural patching for them. And sometimes, even when we have these severe windstorms, which we have, we have spent many hours helping them or contracting them to move the debris and to be able to get it out of their cities, so that they can work and do that. And that's one thing, we do help the cities. We've already this year spent over 681,000 in contracts that they give back to us, but we do go work and help them accomplish their projects. The other one that's important is our intercounty department work. We work for the sheriff's office. We work for the fairgrounds. We've even done work for the BATC in a project they had down there where we went and let the kids come and see the equipment, see what we actually do. Teach them that construction is a fairly important business, and we need good people. We also do the admin buildings. Things that we do is we haul the man lift from here to there in transporting it. We've done water lines down the sheriff's office. They have to install them, but we sure get to dig through all this stuff and find everything, which I think we found a few things.
There's a few antiques down there.
What's that?
There's a few concrete antiques down there.
Oh, yes, we have found that. And sometimes when somebody says...
Any tunnels?
What's that?
Any tunnels?
Not yet, but that's a good question. Or maybe we have. We just haven't told anybody. But we did... yeah, we did. But anybody that says, "Oh, there's nothing there," don't ever believe it. It might not be blue steak, but you'll find something. So, we spend about 316 hours, $24,000 in intercounty help, and we're glad to do that for departments throughout the county.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
On those numbers that you gave us about the lane miles and mountain roads and stuff, were any of those including the cities that you contract for, or was that just specifically county?
That is specific county. Them are county road mileage and county gravel road mileage, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can get more detail. That's a whole separate report, and believe we don't have time to do that today.
I just wondered. I wanted to hear more than that.
Capital improvement projects. Now, I'm gonna kind of go through these quickly, because my time's slipping away. But on capital improvement projects, the one that we've really focused on this year, if you look up on the map, it's not so important what you see, but you'll see some red dots and you'll see some white dots. The red dots mean there are no turnarounds, and the white dots are difficult turnarounds. Now, to an individual liking that pickup truck up there, yeah, it's pretty easy to back into somebody's driveway and turn around. Or the road on the side, the road ends, so you have to back up in that small driveway. But when you're in a 40-foot plow in the wintertime, at night, in the dark, with the snow roads covered, it's almost impossible to do those turnarounds. So, one of our important capital improvement projects has been to create some turnarounds. And some of the issues we have, some there's no turnarounds at all. Some are insufficient turnarounds, poor surface material. If you go... decide to go one way, you're probably in a field you're gonna be stuck. You go the other way, you're gonna be in a fence. If you go straight, you'll be across a road or tracks, and you'll never get out. So, them are the things. So, what is... who does it affect? It affects our snow maintenance. It affects grading, garbage trucks, school buses, the general public, and homeowners. So, that's been one of the things we've kind of focused on this year, generating some turnarounds. This is just one project that we did out on 4,800 West and 3,400 South. This used to be a road that was used for grading. Like I say, you come down that dirt road. You have an alfalfa field on one side, a fence on the other side, or you go around or across a road or tracks, and you're in a pasture. So, our grader operator or our trucks would do what we call the 16-point turnaround. It takes about 15 minutes. Sometimes you have to decide, do I take the barbed wire fence out, or do I get stuck? We've built fences, and the individuals have been pretty good when they realize we can't do it. But this is a thing that we worked with the landowner, got an easement, and they've allowed us to build a 100-foot turnaround. And now that road is paved, and we can... and do that a lot more, and it's beneficial for us and the public. This is another turnaround. This is 7,800 South, where a home was built, and they were required to build turnaround, which helped us out greatly. When they built the turnaround, we improved our portion of the road to make it easier for our snow plows and our trucks. for our snow plows and our trucks to then go down this road. So it's a, it's a good investment when we get opportunities to have these turnarounds, we're able to build these turnarounds. This is down in the Paradise, just outside the Paradise area. This is another capital improvement, I don't know if you guys have been up 3 Mile, it's up 600 South in Petersboro. A lot of people like to go up there because it goes up on top of the Wellsville, but a lot of the cars before, you can kind of see where we're building that road, it was about an 18-foot road, and to back up, we had to back into a driveway which was only 15-foot wide, and we had Mr. Yonk's fan on the other side, so we just made a deal with Mr. Yonk, every time we knock your fence down, we fix it. But we've been able to work out with him and easement, we're going to build another parking, another turnaround here, but it'll allow people to have a little more parking area out on the road and not blocking it when we're trying to do our snow removal. The last capital improvement I want to kind of focus on is this is 600 South, running from Logan City Boundary to the Mendon Boundary. As you can see up in that one picture, it's called road flushing, or what we call bleeding. Sometimes a road after a number of years and a number of road surfaces and chipping seals and all that, it can start to deteriorate even though you're putting a new surface on there. That can be done from truck traffic, heavy traffic, and years and years of use. It comes to the point where you have to come in and take a portion of that road off to create a better surface, and this road also started rutting, so what we did is we had what's called Diamond Road come in, and they do lane leveling and also grinding. We grinded a small surface off the road, we came back and have done a thin overlay on it, and we've done it in a three-phase project. We did from the railroad tracks in Mendon up to the bridge, and then we will go from the bridge to 3,600 West this year, and then we'll grind and prepare it, and we will go all the way to the city boundary next year. This has been a great project, and I'm going to show you the difference it makes. So this is a before and after picture. His before picture is we've got a little bit of rutting, we got that oil bleeding up through, and the road has just been really pounded for many years, but after, after coming in and lane leveling it, and then putting in an inch and a half of what we call lane, or a thin overlay, we've now been able to put fog lines out on that road, it's been leveled out, and now we've provided that road to go for a good long time. Instead of having to tearing up the road, we figured and calculated we could come in and make this road go for much longer. We still got some shouldering work and some other work to do, but the road really improved there. All right, I've only got one or two minutes left, because I don't want to take too much time, but our dust mitigation program, this last year, we asked for some dust abatement and some funding to do that, and we thought we were just going to be able to jump in and get that done this year. Going to come and tell you the truth, that sometimes you plan things, they don't go the way you want, but all, this show map basically shows all of the houses that are now built on gravel roads, and a lot of people would call sometime and say, hey, I'm building a gravel road, it's dusty, and the first comment I wanted to say to them, and it wasn't probably the right comment, but you want to say, well, you built there, I didn't, it was a gravel road to begin with, but that's not the right way to look at it. We realize as the county grows and services continue to increase, we need to try to do some things, but I also found out that there are some benefits from having dust control mitigation. It improves air quality, it improves visibility, it reduces maintenance and needs on roads by 50%, and it also keeps material in place. When the wind blows and material blows away, that's actually blowing money away, because that's the material that holds the road together. So first of the year, we thought it'd be easy to convert this. Well, we ended up struggling to get our truck to work correctly, product and supply has been difficult this year, so we haven't got as much done as we thought we could, but I like where we're going and what we've seen so far. The benefits is, we've got a happy public where it's been put down, we've seen the benefits of the dust staying down, and we are going to see what it does on our road maintenance, because we do believe we can cut maintenance dollars down by the grading, which will help pay for that, and it hopefully will level out at an even cost for doing business. My last slide before you guys kick me out of here is, one thing we do, and my foreman does a really good job on this, sometimes I don't think we, as a road department, we're kind of like worker ants, we just want to go out and do the job, we don't really need to be recognized, we don't need the glory, we just go out there and we want people to ride a road and say, that's a nice road. But sometimes we forget to sell ourselves in the fact that we are accomplishing a lot, but when you spread that out throughout a county, it's hard to always show the projects you're accomplishing. On the dark dots, those dots are dots that are, you can kind of see them a little bit, I could probably have done a little better on this, but, but those dots are dots that are being done this year, so we track all the projects in 2022, the white dots are projects that are open that we're accomplishing, and then the lighter dots are projects that have been accomplished 2017 through 2021. Nice thing about this, you can, GIS has made it so we can tap on that dot, all the information of how many hours we put on the job, the material we put on the job, before pictures, after picture, it is there. So when the public wants an accountability, I feel like we can provide that accountability to both you, the council, and the public in the projects we are accomplishing. And last, I just want to say, we truly do appreciate all the things that the council and the executive and everybody does, we love what we do, we try to do a good job. You will never be able to meet the needs of everyone, and we try the best we can to determine what needs to be done first, and sometimes those decisions are liked by some and not by others, but there's a rhyme and reason for most of what we do. And so that's my report for the half of this year, and hopefully we get to come back and report more. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
This spring, I attended the UAC Building Utah Conference, has been many of the Public Works Department employees, and I really appreciated that chance to get to know them better. They are a good group, they work super hard for the county, they're trying to do their very best, and just wanted to commend them for a job well done, and that I appreciated getting to know them better and thank them.
I appreciate that. It was nice to actually spend a little time one-on-one with individuals, it's, it's nice to know first names and get to know you, appreciate that.
Joel, thank you for everything you do, for your department, thank you, and for the hard workers you are. We appreciate you.
And like I say, it's a dedication all the way from our Public Works Director down to our employees.
Well, we appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll just add that, you know, just to commend you for what you do, for the work that you do every day, the transparency, I mean, government has pretty specific roles, and sometimes it expands, but this is the core function of what we do. So thanks to you, and thanks to Jeremy, and you all make Matt look really good, so thanks for that.
That's what our goal is.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you again.
Thanks for your time. All right, very good. 5:30-ish estimated, let's move down to set some public hearings, and we'll come back to the Board of Equalization in a moment. All right, we have, need to set a public hearing for August 9, 2022, Ordinance 2022-23, William Cody Pitcher Rezone, a request to rezone 16.13 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural 5, RU-5 zone located at 7288 North, 4,800 West, near Amalgas.
Move to set the public hearing for August 9 for Ordinance 2022-23, William Cody Pitcher Rezone.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set a public hearing for Ordinance 2022-23, William Cody Pitcher Rezone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I think we'll just do, can I do both of these together and save some time?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for August 9 for Ordinance 2022-24 and Ordinance 22-25. Ordinance 22-24 is the Martin Bench Rezone, which is a request to rezone 34.06 acres from agricultural A-10 zone to the rural RU-5 zone located at 1032 South, 70th West, near Mendon, and then the other one is the Winnies Property Rezone, a request to rezone 35.2 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural RU-2 zone located at 3798 West, 6,800 South, near Wellsville.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've, it's been moved and seconded that we set public hearings for Ordinance 2022-24 and Ordinance 2022-25, and those public hearings will be on August 9, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, let's go back to Board of Equalization matters. Do we have?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we're just setting the equalization dates, right?
Yes, and looks like Janine has a paper.
Madam Chair, it's important to note that September 22 is part of the USAC Conference, you might not want to include that date.
Okay.
USAC is the 21st through the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
And it's in Bry, near Bryce Canyon this year, so.
No, the 27th is out.
22nd.
22nd is out, okay.
22nd should be removed.
Should cross that out on that really, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to...
So do we need a motion for that, and we'll sign up as needed?
So I'd make a motion that we set the Board of Equalization for September 6, 8, 13, 15, 20, 27, 29, and October 4 and the 6.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set the Board of Equalization dates as listed, except for September 22. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're looking at Resolution 2022-17, a resolution amending the 2022 Cache County Budget. And we have, okay, yes, please come forward.
All right, thank you for having me here. This amendment is the one that we've discussed in the past, so I'm not going to go over any of, I'm not going to go line by line. I just wanted to point out, if you hadn't had a chance to see my email earlier today, there were three changes, not to the, not to include or take away, but per something Dave Erickson said last council meeting, we did on number 10. Instead of it being a use of fund balance, it is just a transfer between improvement and capital equipment. Number 11, it was already an improvement, so we just took out that line item of appropriated fund balance, and on 12, we took out, we're removing it from improvements to building to make it more accurate, so. If there's any other questions, I can answer those at this time as well, so.
Anyone have questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to strike number, let's see, I'm trying to see, my paper's a little bit different than this. Number 17, to assist with the rent for the ballot center, my understanding is that the county clerk said that he had enough, I think I'm doing the wrong one, no, that's right.
No, 17.
That he had enough money to go ahead and move over there, and I have not been, the reasons that he gave us, I, I just didn't seem like there was any substantiation to the need for this funding, therefore, I move to strike item 17.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we strike number 17 on the Cache County Budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Madam Chair, I'll also move to strike number 16.
Okay.
Which is also, was to create voter instruction and search to provide information to voters about vote by mail and so forth. Again, $39,000 for that, I did not see really the justification for that in the information received from the clerk, you know, for exactly what it was for, anything, therefore, I've moved to strike 16.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And if I could just kind of add on to that, if I'm reading the spreadsheet, Phil, that you sent us a little bit earlier correctly, between the county and the municipalities, we were sent $69.5 million from the federal government for the CARES Act and the ARP Act.
Yes.
So that's $69.5 million that the federal government does not have, but figured out a way to get to us, which makes, you know, college students with credit cards look like wise financial stewards. To recover from the effects of COVID, the effects of which actually increased our tax collections. So now we're sitting on 69.5 million bucks, and item number 16 is for $39,000 to put in instructions to people on how to vote by mail to a group of citizens that have been voting by mail for the last nine years. I don't think we should spend $39,000 to tell people how to vote by mail. If they haven't got it by now, I think we're good.
Okay.
So, sorry. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we strike item number 16, $39,000 for mailing out voter information on how to vote by mail. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay.
Can I add one comment? Sorry, I forgot to add it.
Yes.
There was one other adjustment, and Bart can maybe help me out with this, that I found out just a little bit ago. Item number 20, Bart had, well, the IT had requested the $12,800 for a project, and it's come to my attention that that project is going to change substantially, and they don't have enough information at this time to give, to get correct amounts and correct purposes. Is that accurate? So they would like to take it off, they would like to remove it.
Remove that one for now.
Yes.
What item number was that?
Number 20.
Number 20.
So because Bart's asking for it, I'm going to make a motion that we remove item number 20, the $12,800 for the capitalized equipment grants from this budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to remove item number 20 for the IT Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you're good, thanks.
We also needed a motion, and you guys will have to help me remember, item number 18 on the premium pay for county employees, there was a question on council and also the Planning Commission, whose hours are not tracked, and so I believe, and Tony, help me out here if needed, the motion is to apply half of what we would for the full-time employees to those particular two groups who we don't track specifically their hours. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I want some more explanation on the bridge.
Oh, Amy, that, okay, I didn't see.
And I want to know, will there be anyone that will get the $25,000?
There will not be anyone that gets the $25,000.
Not even Amy?
I wish, I mean, that was very helpful, inflation is killing me right now. So as far as the premium pay, as I understand it, it is for employees, not for boards, and so our boards are not considered employees, we pay them a stipend to be on the board, so the Planning Commission, I think you specifically said, so they wouldn't be eligible for this money, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't adjust their pay even mid-year and change the amount that they're being paid, it just couldn't come from the ARPA funds.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying, because that was a whole different last time.
Could I add one thing to that? So it couldn't come from the ARPA funds as an eligible expense, but we could do it from the allowance, because we can, we can use the allowance for pretty much whatever we want.
So the general fund?
The general fund, yes, with the 10 million, yeah, that's something you would like to do.
I will withdraw my motion.
And so, just for clarification, because boards aren't included, elected officials also are not included, it's just employees, is that correct, Amy? So we're not, sorry.
This is confusing.
It is confusing, it is confusing. I'm going off of what Box Elder County has done with their premium pay, and yes, they did include their elected officials, whether they were full-time or part-time, but that would be up to you as a council, if that's something that you'd like to do.
You say they did include?
Yes, they did.
All right, anyone comments? Questions? Councilwoman Werthen withdrew her motion. I see some wheels turning.
So I guess in my mind, I'm not sure what happens to this money if we do nothing.
On the, for the employees, Gordy, so, yeah.
I almost remember such that it, it was available for the employees, and we kind of had come to a decision that it might be, it might be a good thing in goodwill, that we say, yes, we appreciate you being here all during the COVID time, because you were required to be here, and this is how we're going to reward you for being here, and in a way, without wanting to go into COVID and whether it was good or whether it was bad, they still were here. they still were here because they were required to be here. And I was almost leaning towards the point that I think it is a good idea that we say thank you. That was my thought on it. And I don't know exactly if that's, if, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I agree. That's sound thinking, I think, Gordy.
I agree with you, Gordy.
Now, I remember visiting with Councilman Erickson, he didn't get in on the conversation, and he was really concerned about giving more money away. And I think maybe, maybe that's an explanation that you've heard that kind of sums up what the discussion was when you were absent that particular time. I don't know if that made any sense to you, but that was our discussion, and kind of a non-verbal expression that, that's how we tell our county employees that we're here day in and day out through 2020. We appreciate their willingness to come and, and serve the public, which is what they're hired to do. And I'd make a motion that we go ahead and extend that to them.
So that's your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second you.
Is it a motion to include this? Because it's already included.
To include what?
To include the ARPA eligible, hey, it's already in this budget opening.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused on the motion. Are you, are you asking for a motion to approve the entire budget opening?
It's on there as item 18, right?
Yeah, because it's on there as item 18, yeah.
So it would be that you're approving that line item.
Also, it's a motion to divide the question and just vote separately on this and approve it, rather than vote on the whole thing?
Or do we?
I don't know, counsel, what do you want to do?
How about this? How about we make a motion to approve the?
I'm a believer in simplicity, and all of a sudden we're starting to get it more and more difficult.
Why don't we just, I'll just make a motion to approve the budget opening, Resolution 2022-17 with the changes that we have made.
I'll second that.
Okay, and that meaning, Councilwoman Werthen, strike 17, 18, and 20, correct?
Yes.
Not 18.
Not 18?
Oh, yeah, not 18, 16.
16, 17, and 20. 16, 17, and 20.
In addition to the ones that were already noted that were struck previously.
Okay, very good. All right, and we had a second on that?
Yep, I second.
And it includes the ARPA, it includes the premium pay. All right.
Discussion?
I'm trying to correlate a few things here. We got, if you notice here, you got 20 or 23 budget amendments, account detail that we're looking at of each of the changes. And then all of a sudden, when you go further, like I just, I pop into like the Visitors' Bureau, it mentions here that they're going to use their use of fund balance of $100,100. And so, and this is part of the budget resolution, but it's not part of those 23 items that we've been funnelled to. I guess, I'm wondering now, my question is on the Visitor Bureau, what do they, why are they needing $100,100 for fund balance?
Sorry. So I show, are you looking at the back here?
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, we go further down.
I don't have anything for the Visitors' Bureau.
It says right here, under Budget Amendment by Department, I go to Visitors' Bureau, and it says use of fund balance $100,100.
There's a chance that's an older version. This, this updated one that I've printed off has stricken out anything from the Visitors' Bureau, sorry.
Okay, see, that's what I'm trying to, I go through this, and these just aren't correlating.
Take what page is that on?
I'm looking at it right here.
Six.
Page?
Six.
Six or six?
Six of six.
This one here says the hearing date was on 7/12/22, and vote date 7/26/2022, and today is 7/26/22. So I'm trying to correlate these.
I don't see that.
I'm finding out some of these things kind of just like jump out, and we go approve all this, and there's some outside things that kind of slipped in. And I don't want anything to slip in, because we see that too much. And that's just one of them, and I, the others, I think correlate pretty good. We've already talked about the Justice, Children's Justice Center, that one's correlated.
Should the motion perhaps be to approve?
The 23, the 23 amendments, I will go with.
The 23 amendments.
Yeah, as long as we stick with that. But anything else that's added on to these add-ons here, I don't want, unless, until they're vetted.
23 items excluding the three.
Yeah.
And the ones that are redlined, so forth, that we've previously taken out.
Okay, so do we need a new motion then?
No.
I just want to make sure that.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I will amend my motion to approve the ordinance, I forgot the number already.
22-17.
Right here.
Budget resolution.
22-17. To be only for, the 20, would it be 20, because we struck three?
Well, there's a couple more in there that we struck before that are still in that 20, 23.
Only regarding the 23 items that were listed in the Budget Amendment Account Detail, and ask that this Budget Amendment Account Detail be included in the minutes as part of the ordinance.
Okay.
So that needs a second.
Second? Anybody second?
I'll second that. Unless, Carl, did you want to?
Go ahead.
I'll second that one.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we.
Good luck repeating.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm going to try this. That we approve Resolution 2022-17 for the 23 items, but striking 16, 17, and 20 from that list.
And the ones that we previously.
And the ones that we previously had approved.
Have removed.
Have removed.
Which I see are three, is that correct?
Which are three, okay.
The redlined ones, right?
Yes.
Yep, that's three of them.
And that's the only approval, and I ask that it be in the minutes.
Okay. Move, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Phil. All right, consideration of actions here on 11. Ordinance 2022-26 and ordinance amending Section 9.04.10 of the Cache County Code to clarify provision and conform with state code regarding traffic control devices. Everyone had a chance to look at that. Any questions? Any discussion on it?
We'll have a question.
Okay.
Imagine that. Under Section 1, and then it's item E, it says any firearms, tools, instruments, or motor vehicles used in the commission of any violation or offense under this section, and this defense shall be subject to confiscation by any law enforcement agency having jurisdiction over the offense. I'm just wondering if for a Class B misdemeanor, for basically like if you steal a stop sign, which is horrible to do, but if you steal a stop sign or a road sign or something, do we really need to take away somebody's vehicle because they did that? I started thinking about that and found it kind of harsh.
I didn't. I know, I know someone that was killed the very next day after a kid took a stop sign.
Okay, fair enough.
That's pretty, that's pretty blatant. That's, 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 I think that there needs to be a fairly severe penalty.
I would agree with you, Dave.
Well, and I think anytime anybody uses a firearm to do, you know, commit some kind of crime like that, there should be punishment for that.
There should be a consequence that's strong enough that it should be taken seriously.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right.
Well, I will waive the rules and make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-26, ordinance amending Section 9.04.10 of the Cache County Code.
I'll second that.
Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question? And this is for Tony. So the code says, any firearms, tools, instruments, or motor vehicles used in the commission of any violation or offense. So this wouldn't be a fishing expedition for somebody to come confiscate all those things. If I just, you know, Jay walked over and stole a yield sign, they can't come get my car, my tools, or anything else. I would actually have to use those items to remove that particular traffic control device, correct?
Well, in truth, there's actually some state law that governs this. So what Gina's talking about is whether it's commensurate that you take a vehicle when the value of a sign is, let's say it's $500. So the state law addresses that. So frankly, some of this will, it may sound, it provides a vehicle for us to possibly go against somebody's property, but there is state law that will temper this, frankly. So when she talks about that, there are things in place that'll temper this. And also, for example, if you were, I don't know what scenario where you would use a firearm to take a sign. I'm not sure exactly how that's accomplished, but there would be a much more serious crime than a Class B misdemeanor if you were to use a firearm to take a sign. I'm not sure exactly what they were anticipating there, but, sorry.
Keep going, Tony, you're fine. Took down a sign.
So I'm not all that worried about this. It just makes more of a public policy statement that, yeah, we can do it, but it will be tempered by the state statutes that are in place that allow for actual forfeiture of going against people's property when that property is used to commit a crime.
Tony, this, this is part of the low-hanging fruit. This is what we call low-hanging fruit of all these revisions trying to align with the state code.
Right.
So you're saying this does not align with what?
No, I'm saying that this state code will, will temper those kinds of concerns that Gina has. So I don't think that it's.
That this correlates with state?
No, I think it just, it says that we can do that, and that, I think, you know, given the scenario you've given, that may be appropriate. In the practicality of taking an actual vehicle, if somebody used it to transport a sign, that's just highly, highly unlikely, just given the state, the state law, and the legislature's spoken about that. So anyway, I think that it lines up. I don't have any real concerns. I just, when you start thinking about, wow, that just seems really troubling, and you can take a vehicle over or something like that, well, the likelihood of that happening isn't very great. Now, I'm not saying never, you can never say never, but I'd have to have the right fact scenario. So I'm not, I'm not worried about it.
Thanks, Tony.
That answer, Mike, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we amend Section 9.04.10 of the Cache County Code. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 2022-21. A resolution to, one, authorize placement on the November 8th, 2022, general election ballot of a proposition for the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed 20 million, right, for paying all or. Uh huh?
It's supposed to be 20.
Right, yeah, we have a typo here, but it's 20. For paying all or a portion of the cost of purchasing land, conservation easements, and other interests in land from willing landowners in order to protect scenic vistas, preserve open lands near valley gateways, add trails and trail connectivity, and maintain agricultural, agriculture, waterways, and wildlife habitat. Number two, provide for the publication of a notice of public hearing. Number three, approve the form and direct the publication of a notice of election and the ballot proposition, and number four, related matters. Did you want to address this, Tony, on anything?
Let me just make a comment here.
Okay.
The attachment we have in, in our materials here, the Cache County Resolution 2022-21, on page three, says $25 million.
But John, yeah, John sent out a correction.
Yeah, did he?
Yeah, he did.
Yes, it's been changed. So thank you, Carl. Okay.
My hope, is this ARPA available, and we'll just take the $20 million, put it in there, and then there's no tax?
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, if you've got to spend, just do that and be done. Now, I wasn't meaning that, I'm serious about that, isn't it? ARPA eligible?
It's for social distancing.
Okay, any discussion? People looking?
I have a, I'm wondering about the portion that says trails and trail connectivity, because we already do a lot with trails and trail connectivity through our RAPS and our, in our trails program. I'm wondering if it would be wise to remove that so that more money would actually go toward maybe agriculture or scenic vistas and that type of thing, since we're already doing good on trails, in my opinion. How do you guys feel about that?
I feel the same way. There's a lot of avenues for funding for trails, trails connectivity. There seems, RAPS tax, you know, there's a whole bunch of money that goes that way. But I, I believe that a lot of the applications that go to some of the funding mechanisms to stretch the dollar, if you have some sort of a trail or trail connectivity issue within that land that you might be setting aside, I think it probably scores higher. Am I wrong?
It's okay if I speak.
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
First of all, thank you, Madam.
If you'll come up to the mic, please.
So, but I agree with you, you know, there's just so many funding mechanisms, it seems like, for trails that I hate to, and I don't want this to be hijacked by a trails issue. Because see, some of these things, that's what they end up to be, is just to go get a trail taken care of, and I don't, I don't, I'm not really in favor of that.
Well, but, can I, just a clarification on, you know, what you guys are saying, does this give more right to the owner of that property to do the trail and trail connectivity? You know, that's part of what, and that's what Dave is saying, is that it helps that on that?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the council members. You, you've been marvelous to work with on this issue. I want to thank you. You've asked all the right questions, and I think that serves the public very well. And we also have a number of people who've participated in our group here today to lend their support. I want to thank them. With the issue of, of the trail connectivity, the issue we have on trail connectivity is gaps, where one trail ends and another begins. And the only way to connect that and make it more serviceable for the public, like we see in Garden City, for example, or other places, is to acquire some sort of an easement across that land. None of it can be mandatory. It cannot be mandatory. It requires a willing property owner. There's nothing in the resolution or in our discussions that prioritizes trails or trail connectivity over the other kinds of open space. That comes under your purview when we, when you appoint a committee, if you choose to do so, to use, to decide how to use the funds. And I did want to reiterate that, that even though the agenda And I did want to reiterate that even though the agenda mentioned a twenty-five million dollar bond, a twenty million dollar bond is what we've talked about all along. We don't want to try to edge that upward. The other thing we've learned is that the estimated cost per average household is actually less than what we've been talking. We've been talking about thirty-one dollars a year. It's now twenty-five dollars and change per year for a twenty million dollar bond, because we have a broader tax base. The number of residences and businesses has grown. So that's the issue with trail connectivity. I think we need trails in there, because in our public survey, the citizens expressed a very strong interest in trails. I agree, though, that it should not hijack anything, and that would be up to you ultimately, because anything that your committee, like the RAPS tax committee, anything that they would recommend, you would have the final say on whether to adopt that or not. And if you felt that trails or trail connectivity, or any other kind of open space was getting too much attention, and frankly, too much money, you'd be able to change that or veto that.
Okay.
And we're just here, Steve Daniels, my other co-chair is here, and if you have any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question on page two, second paragraph. And I'm for this, it's just when I read that, I'm like, it gives, it almost to me gives a different opinion. Whereas Cache County, the county desires to pay for all or a portion of the costs, I would rather say desires to promote a method of preserving agriculture on that. Does it gotta be that desires to pay? Does anybody else have an issue with that? As I read that, it just came across as different to me.
And I think that would be a question for Tony. That language...
I don't think that there's anything wrong with, I think you can tweak this way that you feel you need to.
Well, it almost seems like I'm looking for somewhere to throw money, and I'm not. Desires to pay, I mean, I'm from the agriculture side, and I want to promote that, but if you read that, it's, that's her whole desire and function. I don't know if anybody else has an issue with that. That's just my outreading of the...
It's the now, therefore, is it gonna be a little bit more important than the whereas is here? I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not discounting the whereas is, but to tweak that, the way you want to tweak that isn't gonna affect now, therefore.
What would you like to change, Tony Nolan? I think when you said that, I was...
Well, it says we desire to pay for all or a portion, and it just says Cache County, the county would like to promote the agricultural space and open space, rather than...
Incentives, desires to pay for all or portions, you say promote preservation.
Yes.
I like that piece.
I like it, too. And that's a good call, Nolan.
So you just strike desires to pay for all or a portion of the costs of, and then you say promote.
Do you have a problem with that, Tony?
I don't have a problem with that, and whatever you'd like to change, we can certainly.
And I don't know if there was a reasoning for it, it's just that when I read that, I'm like, that seems pretty strong from our standpoint, and I'm open for that and want it, but...
I think you've got a good point, Nolan. I think changing that language is fine.
Okay, that was one that I had.
And I think, in my, having looked at this and had you all come in, I think everybody is interested in preserving open space, all of us are, and I think we should put it to the voters. As I've expressed all along, my big concern is you vote for one thing, you vote for this thinking you're gonna get one thing, and it ends up being something else.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Sure.
So the more we can explain to the voters what this means, what this will actually do, so if you think that us putting up twenty million dollars, and you round the bend coming out of Sardine Canyon, and you're gonna see alfalfa fields and cows and everything else just like it is today, that's not, that's not what this does.
Right.
Not any stretch of imagination. But what does it preserve? What can we do? What can this twenty million dollars do? As long as we're clear on that...
You bet.
And we express that to the voters, I think we need to let them decide, rather than, I'm in no position to make any decisions for Nolan, and I'm sure he supports that one hundred and ten percent. Well, and if you approve the resolution, then it becomes our job to do an education program to do exactly what you're saying, Paul, is educate the public and make sure they understand how and why it would work, which is just valuable for the final election anyway. You want an informed electorate. Absolutely.
May I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
On that whereas, that second whereas, you would prefer if we struck the clause that begins with desires to pay and says, whereas the county council seeks to protect scenic vistas, preserve open lands, and just take out that sort of desires to pay clause?
Something along that line. It just seems like that errors that I'm just looking somewhere to spend money. I'm looking for somewhere to save money.
Good point.
And so whether it's protect or promote, that's all I'm looking for.
Jack, I have a concern in my mind, as I have watched things, the council and citizens vote for somebody, then all of a sudden, those who were behind the scenes writes the criteria of qualifying for and all this other, and many a times, it leads in a direction that we really didn't want. And so who will review and who will finalize the applications, or the, yeah, the application to apply for this money?
You will.
This is part of the education process.
Yeah, first of all, we need to educate everybody, but if the bond passes on the November election, then the council sets up something, we think, like the RAPS committee, to review possible projects, make recommendations to you, the council, and you have the final decision.
I think the RAPS tax is functioning fairly well.
It seems to be functioning really well, and of course, it's a sales tax, not a property tax.
Yeah, this, as long as we don't, we don't write the criteria that heads in a different direction, what the intent that we're doing...
Yeah.
We're okay, but I've seen the state where the legislature will pass a law, and then when the people go ahead and write the ordinances and all that, it makes you do things that there was no pen in the law.
They take liberties. That's why it's very important, because this is a bond issue that taxes the public.
Casey's laughing.
That's very important for the council to have the final say.
Casey's laughing, but...
Casey, is that feeling guilty?
I, you know, just keep my own in mind.
There we go. Hey, well, we've got the chance, Casey.
Gordy, I think your point's well taken, because that's a concern that I have. I would prefer to see more of those details of the criteria and what it's gonna look like, so people are sure and have a better idea, like Paul said, of what they expect, because I think everybody has in their mind what they want to preserve, and they think that's what it's gonna do. I'd really like to have more of that detail nailed down before this goes to voters, so that they are really confident about what they're voting for, especially when we're gonna have most likely a school bond, we've got the reissuance of RAPS tax, and we've got crazy high property tax, I'm sorry, property values this year that people are concerned about, and so I feel like it's premature for those reasons. I'd like to see more detail about how this will work.
May I address that, Madam Chair?
Please.
I understand your concern, Gina, and like I say, you folks have asked all the right questions. It's very difficult to put in a resolution and on a ballot something that is that comprehensive. One thing we've seen is that there was a situation in another county in Utah, in Wasatch County, where they tried too hard to be specific and proportional and all those things, and what they found, their bond issue passed, but now they can't find anybody who qualifies for the open space, because it was so narrow and so specifically defined. So there's a balance there. There's a balance there, where it can be too specific and too defined, but you also don't want it so vague that anything goes.
You almost have to leave that somewhat vague, based on the matching funds that are coming in, because they have qualifications to that.
That's right. So to that point, I mean, there's nothing in this resolution that I could see, I just went through it quickly again after reading it before. As far as the board that this council would set up next year, if this passes, we're gonna set up a board, but we don't have any specifics on what that would entail. If we wanted to do it like the RAPS tax board, where each, you know, each seat on this council would have, would appoint someone to that board to represent that part of the county? We don't have anything like that in this resolution. Is that correct? Right. Okay. We want the council to have the flexibility... To create it like as we want. To do what you feel you ought to do.
My feeling on this is the education part of it, and I don't want to confine ourselves that we're so, like you said, so specific that we kind of dig ourselves a hole. And I think that's where a lot of the education comes in on it. We need to be upfront with the education, be very specific with that education, and then give the public the right to use what they have formed an opinion about, and give their final say on that ballot.
Right.
That's my feeling on it.
We have held off on a big education campaign, because we didn't want to get ahead of the council. We wanted you to be in charge of the process, and then if and when the resolution passes, then we're prepared to do a pretty darn ambitious education campaign.
On that, Jack, a question on that, with the education, are some of those things that you would present to the council, you know, before you put that out as an education piece, or do you feel that's important? How does the council feel about that?
Whatever you wish.
Well, I mean, I think certainly when we publish things about this, that then education needs to be provided, but you know, there has not been a single issue come forward in my five-plus years on this council, that I've had more overwhelming support of doing something like this. And, I mean overwhelmingly, and it's, I think it's been well thought out, I think Jack and his committee have done a great job of researching other, what other entities have done, and finding a way to help us preserve open space in a way that still provides flexibility and income to farmers whose lands are being withheld from development, from developers, to allow this to happen. And I agree, we can't, at this juncture, narrow it down so tightly, that, because, I mean, we don't know enough about it, but these guys do. And so we need to just put it out there, let the voters decide, and see what they want to do.
I agree with you, Carl. All right, do we have any kind of a motion on this?
Well, I'll waive the rules and make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
To approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, a resolution to one authorize placement on the November eighth general election ballot of a proposition for the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed twenty million dollars for paying all or a portion of the costs of purchasing land, conservation easements, and other interests in land from willing landowners in order to protect scenic vistas, preserve open lands near valley gateways, add trails and trail connectivity, and maintain agriculture, waterways, and wildlife habitat. Two, provide connectivity and maintain, let's see, two, provide for the publication of a notice of public hearing. Three, approve the form and direct the publication of a notice of election and ballot proposition. And four, related matters.
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you want your wording in there, though?
If they would, so can we amend the motion to have that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, then I second it still.
Can you state the wording that you would like to amend?
Every time I stated it changes.
That's why I'm asking.
I'd like to strike desires to pay, and is interested in promoting or protecting, I don't know.
About promoting and protecting?
Why don't you say desires to promote the preservation of open lands?
Bingo. Like what he said, see, it changes every time.
So can we just say desires to promote the preservation of open lands? So you would strike from pay over to preserving?
Good, I'll go with that. You guys good with that?
Yep.
Yes. Councilman Erickson?
I think this is interesting, because it's, I think there's some really good things, but this is about the avenue that they've gotten to, because there's such limiting factors. You would hope that economics could maybe, you know, and people's really desires, and that if it had the value that it does, that it would sell for that value. You know what I'm saying? A farmer's value, if they want the open space, then hey, if, what'd you say, pretty vistas? Is your wording there?
Seen it, vista.
If that was the ultimate value, then why doesn't it sell for that? It doesn't, you know? I was hoping economics would take care of these kind of things, but it doesn't. It usually goes the other way. We usually fill up to the, every little cubic square foot and so forth. I'm not a, I'm really not in favor of taxing, but I am in favor of letting the people speak, and so we'll put it out on the ballot and let the people speak.
Let them decide.
And let them decide, and if that's something they dislike the RAPS, just I think that program has, me, done an amazing thing. It's taken a few dollars and been spread throughout the whole county and created opportunities for cities, towns, and venues that they wouldn't have even, wouldn't have even thought of even building or having without some sort of a revenue stream for that. Where this will go, I don't know. I think that committee could have, you know, should have a powerful influence, but I want to make sure that that committee that is put together, that there is diversity in that committee.
Yeah.
If it becomes a canned committee, then to be honest with you, all heck will break loose for me. I just, we need to have vested people into the assets that they're working with need to be on that committee.
Okay.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
I would vote in favor of that we let the people speak.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, that we waive the rules and approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one with Nolan's revision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Because I want more detail, not because I oppose open space. I want to be very clear, and I thank the committee for their work.
All right, very good. Thank you, everyone. All right, we have on item C, review of Baker annexation petition to the city of Hyde Park. Thanks, you guys.
All right. Want to go just a moment?
I thought they were here for the Will's Founder's Day break.
Yeah, it should be, I knew what fun it was.
All right, thank you, council, for your review and consideration this evening. Is potential agreement with an annexation into Hyde Park City. It's just shy of one hundred and sixty-two acres, and it actually does create an unincorporated peninsula, not within Hyde Park City itself, but between Hyde Park City and North Logan to the south. And you can see that area highlighted, and state code requires that when a peninsula or an island is created, then the council must agree to that annexation. Here's another perspective, you see the annexation in blue to the north and the resulting peninsula between Hyde Park, the future boundary of Hyde Park City and North Logan. It is a substantial area in terms of a peninsula, I believe quarter mile or more in terms of the height or the width of that to the south, meaning the north-south measurement. And then also is, in terms of potential impact... And then, uh, also is, uh, in terms of potential impacts to the county, the county's been coordinating with, uh, property ownership as well as Hyde Park City to secure 66-foot public right-of-way along the unimproved road of 3,400 north. And so that would result in about just over 2,000 feet of dedicated county right-of-way, whereas in the past, not up to present, it's just been a use by, or a road by use or a prescriptive easement. So that's certainly going to be an enhancement in terms of securing, uh, public right-of-way to continue that 3,400 north through the property. So, uh, council, uh, or staff's recommendation to council is that the council agree to allow this unincorporated peninsula area resulting from the Baker annexation to the city of Hyde Park.
So on 3,400 north, that's in the unincorporated peninsula, do we maintain any of that road right now? So Matt, is this going to cause you stress?
Oh, it's a pain now, isn't it?
I mean, it's a pain. I mean, that's my only concern, right, is, is the roads between Hyde Park, North Logan, uh, and then we've got us on that little section is going to cause stress.
We've been able to work with Hyde Park pretty well on, if they're increasing the use. I know they have a bike trail up there or a walking trail that's increased the use. Uh, we've, we've have, currently, we have a very good relationship with Hyde Park. Um, we would continue to maintain this portion as I've been told it's not really scheduled to develop in that area where the road is. Um, but they don't really have the equipment. I mean, we're not maintaining this as we would other county roads. This is definitely kind of an off-road gravelly, you know, very low maintenance, but we would continue to maintain that portion through the annexation area until such time that, you know, development took over or another annexation went through. So we might go up there and maintain it once every three or four years or something. Very low maintenance.
So you're picking that up essentially from when it comes out, I, I mean, from when it comes out, and then we're going to go through that annexation piece, and then we're going to pick it back up outside of that. So we're basically maintaining that 3,400 even through the annexation and all the way on and up.
And that's because there's some property owners that are still east of that area that still need to get to their fields, their crops, but mostly this is ATV, UTV-type off-roading, motorbikes. But there is a few property owners. We call this the NEM road, and the NEMs still farm up there. They still bring hay and crops off there. So if they need, if they're having a hard time getting their crops in, Paul, or getting their equipment up and, uh, up and out of there, they'll call us and we'll go maintain it for them, so.
But you don't, you're not feeling jitters if we do this?
No. No, we just, before the annexation went through, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't get in a battle with Hyde Park over, okay, who owns it? How's it going? Is this a use? Was this a RS2477? You know, just, we just, and the property owner has been, this, he said this was previously negotiated, it's county right-of-way. He has no issues dedicating it, making it official, and that, that way, we're continuing to have use on both ends of our annexation. So we're, the, the Public Works Department is fine with this.
Is North Logan and Hyde Park, do they have an agreement on that next parcel there where it says unincorporated peninsula? Is there already a bound to kind of, uh, gentleman's agreement, or is it going to be a fight for the, who gets it?
I can't answer that, Dave.
Navigate to the mapping layers to show which city has the annexation declaration. But I believe there is that understanding between the two communities. I just have to pull the layers up to answer your question thoroughly.
I just want another meeting later.
Is there, is there an actual document that, uh, that has the size and shape of what a peninsula is? Because you've got, you've got, of course, that's a peninsula, but it looks like it's a pretty good-sized piece of land, and you go to the east and it's still a county. Um, they're not making an island. Um...
Yeah, that's the thing. It's not an island. It's just...
There's two or three other islands, even down.
Yeah, I noticed that too. So I don't know what we're, what are we fighting, I shouldn't say fighting, what are we really having this discussion over?
It's really just checking a box that you've had the opportunity to review and acknowledge, uh, your agreement that it, and it is a, a formula measurement, a ratio, that this does technically meet in terms of being a peninsula.
And, and we've asked for it. Remember these, these, these kind of things? We've asked to, hey, bring it to us so we not hit blind it later. So now we've brought it. Tell them, go ahead and go to it.
So we're, we're wide-eyed, right?
You know, it doesn't affect Matt in any way. We've asked those questions. We're still okay there, so it's not going to be any financial burden to, to us, hopefully.
And to consider any impacts to county services.
So do we need to make a motion or anything, or we just need to?
Gina, is that drug, drug deal road up there?
You think I know that? What the heck?
Is that, isn't that the road that they're, they keep talking about, or is?
I think that's...
Sorry.
You could choose to make a motion or agree however you wish to agree.
All right. We want a motion.
To move the matter along, I'll just make a motion that we, uh, approve the Baker annexation petition to the city of Hyde Park.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move the Baker annexation petition to the city of Hyde Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Tim.
Make sure you don't put drug deal road in your...
Okay, very good. All right, well, let's go on to other business. Uh, special audit update and discussion. Paul, would you like to lead us on that?
Let me go ahead and get started on this one. I mean, we've already allocated money into the professional and technical account for the council. And because we are a, a body and we can't act except by major, majority vote in open meeting, uh, we need a motion, or we need to have the opportunity to make a motion to hire professional staff to provide technical assistance and analysis of all financial matters of the county. It's different than other elected officials in the county who make decisions as individuals and don't have to bring it into public meetings. But because we always have to vote to do something, we need to make a motion in a public meeting. We've already allocated the money for this special audit. I think everybody's aware. I just want to check to see if anybody wants to say anything before I just make that motion so that we can, um, actually engage professional staff to provide us those technical assist, that technical assistance and analysis.
I'll just say I'm supportive of getting some technical assistance and analysis. Believe that we have a duty as a council to respond to concerns, potential things, and get some help, taking a closer look at things. So I am supportive. And if, what, did you make a motion, Paul?
No, I was just going to say I've, I've got a very specific one I'll make, but if anybody wanted to discuss anything before I made the motion. Okay. If, if not, I move that the council retain Sage Forensic Accounting to develop the scope of the audit and provide technical assistance and analysis regarding the county's current internal controls. Once that scope has been developed, we will vote on the specifics of that scope and goals. In addition, as part of this motion, I move that the council retain Lee Nelson to provide technical assistance and analysis of ordinances adopted or could, or ordinances that could be adopted by the council in relation to financial matters. And with this motion, the council authorizes the chair and/or the vice chair to sign letters of agreement or engagement with Sage Forensic Accounting and Lee Nelson.
I will second your motion, Paul.
Okay, it's been...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
It was discussed in stages, so before the council chair or vice chair keeps signing, would that come back to the council as it goes through stages?
Yes, absolutely. Comes with the stage. So initially, the scope, and then that scope's going to come and we vote on that.
Got it.
But it'll be to do those initial steps first with Sage Forensic Accountants and Lee Nelson. Then we'll sign those agreements. Then it'll come. Then we'll, we'll go from there, once they scope it out.
Any other questions for Paul or any other discussion on this? Okay.
And then I wrote it down for you, Barbara, so you can make it, make it easy.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the council retains Sage Forensic Accounting to develop the scope of the audit and provide technical assistance and analysis regarding the county's current internal controls. Once that scope has been developed, we will vote on the specifics of the scope and goals. In addition, it's been moved that the council retain Lee Nelson to provide technical assistance and analysis of ordinances adopted or to be adopted by the council in relation to financial matters. As part of this motion, the council authorizes the chair and/or vice chair to sign letters of agreement or engagement with Sage Forensic Accounting and Lee Nelson. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to say nay. I, I just can't quite grasp, get my head around this whole thing, so I'm going to vote nay.
Okay, thanks, Carl. All right. Okay, we are going, Council Summer Social, Thursday, August 25th at 6:00, right? At Gordy's House? Okay.
Correct. We're ready. We haven't, we haven't got the shrimp caught, but we're going up next week to catch the salmon, so we'll get a little closer.
What, what would you like us to bring? Would you like to make up a list and we can send it around and?
I think the best thing to do in these cases is, is, um, we'll do the shrimp boil, which, uh, consists of corn and potato and all that kind of stuff.
Uh-huh.
But usually you like a little bit to go with it, but there's almost as much as you can eat in that shrimp boil as you really want. But sometimes it's good to have salads and some desserts. So
Okay.
if we wanted to divide, um, half of the council up in desserts and half up in salads, and I think Cindy, I'll do some, some, uh, homemade root beer as well.
Okay. So how about we three do the desserts?
Sure.
Three over here salads. Oh, Carl.
I feel really bad. We are not going to be in town, so I'm going to have to miss it.
Well, then, I'm sorry, Carl.
I am really sorry.
Yeah. Um, okay, then Gina and I will do desserts. And do you guys want to do salads? Or would you like to divide it up that way, or one more dessert?
You need, we'll be happy to.
We'll probably invite some of the other people that are involved in this here meeting.
Okay.
And we'll divide them up in salads and desserts as well.
Okay.
But let's do that with what we've got here.
So we'll say, Dave and Nolan, you guys plan on salads.
Unless I hear different from you.
Okay, very good.
I am tentative at this point. I have closed meeting, but I, I'm working on it.
This will be a good enough event that it'll supersede anything you can come up with.
Very good. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, we have the Cache County Fair coming up, uh, Wednesday, August 13th through Saturday, August 16th. So I'm excited about that, yes.
Are we doing a, a stagecoach ride?
This year, they're, they, they could not fit it in with all of the extra slack.
Oh.
Also, um, this week to August 1st is the discount period, if you want to get discount rodeo tickets.
Thank you.
So make sure you go to the event center and pick them up.
And just for clarification, that's where all county employees, not
All county employees.
All county employees get those discounted.
Are they going to do the same as previous years? Eight, you can get eight half-price tickets or something?
It's, it's up to eight, and the covered is not discounted. If you buy the covered, that's regular price.
Is this?
But if you buy outside, you get a discount.
Is this offered to our boards, like the planning commission, board of adjustment?
They have a list of employees, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure. They probably aren't on that list.
It would be nice, as far as I'm concerned, to extend it to them.
Yes.
I think that'd be a great idea.
I think it would be great to extend it to them.
To, to the planning commissioners.
Yeah.
Board of Adjustment?
Them and, them and their spouse, and that'd be great.
I'll, I'll get that list and I'll, I'll call them.
I think that's an awesome idea, Nolan.
Very good, Nolan.
Yeah. All right, then we have the River Heights Apple Days Parade, Saturday, August 27th at, question mark. Okay, um, anyone interested in being in that? It's usually in the afternoon. It has been.
It's a nice parade, but unfortunately I'll be gone.
Okay. You can put me tentatively down on that. I'll find out.
I'm a little worried about Carl.
Well,
You should be.
Over a year ago, we made reservations and paid for a trip to Italy, Germany, and, and France.
Good. A year ago, you were betting on the come, Carl. I tell you what.
It was, to squeeze it in, it's called a passion play at Ober, Ober Armour Gala.
I have heard of that.
And so, uh, you had to get in really early in order to get a place to, to be able to see.
I headed there in October.
Are you really?
Going to go trace my dad's footsteps in World War II.
Uh-huh.
That's so nice.
Yeah.
We expect a report on that.
Slideshow.
I hope to see you long, so.
I'm going to Preston this weekend.
I'm going to Burley.
You run up to everybody, Barbara, you get them early.
All right, very good.
On a date.
Uh-huh.
On a date.
Okay, good. Well, Carl, we're happy for you. That sounds awesome.
We need a full report as well.
Yeah. Okay, the Wellsville Founder's Day Parade on Monday, September 5th. That, that's Labor Day, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go.
I'll go to that probably too.
You can put me down as well.
Okay.
I will try if I'm around.
I might go to that. Put me tentative. I got to go see.
You've got to see the flipping chambal.
I've got to see what the, uh, the Neary Wells and Wellsville are doing.
I usually am gone on Labor Day, but I'm going to...
Paul, if you really want to have a good Wellsville Founder's Day, you join the Indians, and then you get the real, the real spirit of the whole thing.
Hey, stop there.
Yeah, okay. And moving on. Okay. The Cash Cheese and Dairy Festival, Thursday, Sept- 20, September 29th through Saturday, October 1st. And I, this was, the, last year was the first year for this, and I'm excited that we're continuing on with this, so keep that in mind.
And thanks to Craig Butters for starting that up.
That's right, yeah.
He really was the, the brains behind that whole thing, so we've got to give him credit.
Thank you, thank you.
Another event that's funded partially with Raps Tax.
Yes, that's true.
Brings a lot of people in.
Okay, and the USU Homecoming Parade, Saturday, October 8th. Again, we don't know what time, but you can put me down for that. I usually go for that.
Put me too. And Gina had a wonderful idea.
Okay, let's hear it.
We, we're going to see if we can get a county fire truck to ride in
Yeah, that'd be cool.
in the parade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like it.
If I'm here, I need to check. I might have to go out of town per previous engagement. Bad decisions are made in life, and, uh, so if I'm here, put me down tentatively. I need to check.
Okay.
Carl just wants to hold the O's, so he's...
That's right.
You're hoping you won't figure that out.
He starts throwing candy, we'll throw water.
We've got to do that in every parade and spray each other down.
Especially in the heat of the day.
The last few had to be brutal.
Yeah. How, by the way, anybody want to report on the parades that they were in this last weekend?
Hey, I saw your O's picture. You guys look great, Carl and Barbara.
You know, I, I'll, I'll just report on the Logan one. That was kind of fun because Logan has a policy that you can't throw candy from the vehicle. And Janine suggested that, uh, I plead because I can't walk that far, that we'd be spared from that, uh, requirement. And, uh, as we've talked about it, my wife said, well, you know what? Because we don't want to in any way, uh, hurt our chances for participating in the parade, parade in the future. So she said, why don't you drive the truck and I'll walk with Barbara? And so my wife threw the candy out, walking along with Barbara, and you know, it turned out to be really a fun
It did.
experience.
Yeah, it was great.
Just say they made John White look chintzy in the, in how much stuff they were able to throw out.
They threw a lot. They did.
We did.
He's all bubble gum, though.
Is it? You guys used the rest of it? Yeah?
I ran out in the North Logan Parade, but near the very end. The kids loved the bubble gum. They were screaming for bubble gum.
Yeah, they did.
We had fun. Carl and I had fun doing the North Logan Parade. That was a good time. Good group of, you know, well-attended parade and lots of fun.
Yep.
It was good.
Well, Nolan and I will report on the Menden Parade. That doesn't, uh, they were very excited to have us there. We've been there before, but only maybe once or twice in a lot of years. And when we applied, they were really appreciative of it.
Awesome.
And so we took a, a, a David Erickson approach to the parade. We took a four-wheeler. We put Nolan's wife in charge of driving it, and that crazy lady, she'd drive... We put Nolan's wife in charge of driving it, and that crazy lady, she'd drive over to her friends and we'd give them candy. On this side, we'd give them candy.
Well, you got to use the steering wheel for something.
And our wives, they had as much fun as we did.
Good deal. Awesome. That makes my heart feel good that we could have fun on that. All right, okay. Let's have council member reports. We already reported on the parade. Anybody have anything? David? How about you? Nothing? Gordy?
We're planning on a really, really, really good shrimp boil.
Awesome. Nolan?
This Thursday is presentation of the general plan to the planning commission, so I will be there, and then I suspect it comes before the council. So a lot of work gone into that, and there's going to be a lot of time. But the planning commission is there, the guys who really got to wrap it around first, so that's coming up.
Nolan, I have a question for you. I just thought of speaking to planning commission. Have they seen a ordinance regarding airports redoing the ordinance there?
Big time. We discussed it heavily last time. There's talk about changing it, updating it because of the no-fly zones and the property that's engaged in that. In fact, there's some citizens who have sent me some stuff, but we're trying to wrap it around. So yes, we're trying to get a handle on the airports around the valley.
So they haven't approved anything yet to come to council? They're still working on it?
Where's our guys? No, it was a discussion the last time we had B&amp;Z, so we were supposed to take it and debate it and change and come back with recommendations on it. If somebody was here, I was actually going to ask, because I watched a plane last night land five times up by my house, and I wasn't quite sure there was an airport there. But they did pretty good at landing.
That's better than the alternative.
So yeah, it's, there is a discussion on it. So...
I'm glad they didn't land like they did in Mendon.
Mendon, yep. So there is, that one we have debated, and that's carried on through the planning and zoning. As you may know, we rejected a CUP on one, and that took a lot of discussion. So lots of input from the staff, development services. So hopefully we get that where it's something the citizens like.
Thanks, Nolan.
I'll talk to you about other things later. Okay. Airport stuff in that axon.
I'll just take this opportunity to publicly thank Nolan and publicly thank the planning commission. They do a huge amount of work. And with what we face as a community, are unheralded in a lot of ways. So any chance we can get to, to put them to the forefront, we should, we should do that. So thank you, Nolan, for that work.
Thank you, but I think if we would talk about their pay sometime. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
That is, if we could get that on the schedule.
Budget, keep that one in mind, please.
Okay.
Let's, let's double.
I wish we could give them some of that, that money.
ARPA.
The ARPA money. I wish there was some way they could qualify.
We ought to look into that and see.
Dirk, would you figure out a way where they can qualify? That's your next assignment.
I believe the allowance you can spend it on, there's no real restriction.
Because they didn't miss a meeting. We had to go through Zoom, just like what we did here, but they still met. So when you talk about qualifying for ARPA, I think those guys would.
I think if we can get that on the next budget opening to, to do something there rather than waiting, I'd love to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Carl?
Nothing specific except that, Amy. I noticed on the job openings, they're advertising for an airport manager. Are we losing our airport manager?
Yes, he'll be retiring.
That's going to be a loss. Okay.
Thanks, Carl. Gina?
I don't have anything specific, but I'll just say that I really appreciate working with each of you and hearing your different opinions and your depth of thought and your expertise. And I just feel privileged to get to work with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. I want to thank Paul for taking over for me today, and appreciate him stepping in on that. And just by way of FYI, Dave, Nolan, and I are meeting with Casey Snyder and Logan City tomorrow to discuss the solid ways.
There was a point in there. Did we invite legal?
See, I, I asked about that, and Casey did not give me an answer on that.
Because isn't Logan bringing their legal?
That's my, that's my understanding.
So...
So, but I don't know.
Shouldn't the county have their legal sitting there?
That's my feeling, that they should.
When is that?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow at 3:30.
Whatever.
You see him trying to figure out where he's going to be tomorrow.
And that's at the Logan City offices, correct? Is that your understanding?
I don't even know where that is, so I'll figure it out tomorrow.
Okay. So that's just FYI.
Somebody ought to be there just to bounce something off, because if they're bringing their attorney, then we should match them one up.
Yeah, we could, we'll have somebody there, either myself or...
Thank you, Tony. But I agree with you, Carl. I mean, Nolan, yeah. That we should have some representation there. All right, and that said, we, well, could I have a motion to adjourn for an executive session?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session, Utah Code 52-4-205 1A, discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I keep forgetting that. Thank you.
You hear all these ayes, and it sounds overwhelming.
Yeah.